We're going to call the regular meeting of Erie County Council, our on-the-road meeting in Mill Creek Township at Asbury Woods, to order at 6:15 PM this evening, Tuesday, July 20. Please stand and join us.
(inaudible) 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 Ladies and gentlemen, as the chairman of council, we certainly want to welcome all of you to tonight's meeting. As many of you know, and for those of you who don't, each summer, council tries to get out into the different parts of the county and hold a meeting in the different districts, particularly the districts represented by the county representatives, as the courthouse represents an area of at least three council members. So, this is our second meeting this summer, and we certainly want to thank our vice chairwoman Clear for setting up the meeting tonight, and I'd like to turn the meeting over to you for a welcome, if you would, please.
Yes, I will, and I'm short, so I'll stand up. I want to thank all of you for being here in District One. This is the majority of Mill Creek, not quite all of Mill Creek, that we represent, and this, to me, is Mill Creek. We are beautiful woods and green spaces that we have here, and we are about family, and that's actually what I love most about Mill Creek. I think all of us can say that about our districts. But anyway, I want to welcome you all here, and thank you for coming to Asbury Nature Center, one of my favorite places in all of Mill Creek. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Clear, for all the work that you've done in helping set this up, as well as our staff, the work that they continue to do on our behalf. We certainly appreciate all of you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the portion of the meeting where we have a hearing of the public. As I mentioned earlier, if you call in, we allot you five minutes to speak. I have a timer here. I'll ask for your name and municipality, and then begin the time. We will have an opportunity for everybody who would like to speak, to speak this evening. If you have not called in, you will be given three minutes to speak. So with that said, we do have two people that called in, and first on our list is Courtney Sable. Is Courtney here? Courtney Sable. Okay, if Courtney does arrive before we're done with the hearing of the public, we will give her an opportunity to speak. Next on our list is Brenton Davis. If you wouldn't mind just coming up to the mic and give us your name and municipality, and then I'll begin your time.
So, thanks, Chairman. I don't think we need the mic, you're probably all here.
Yeah, I think you're fine.
So, for the go-to-the-order, Brenton Davis, a resident of Mill Creek Township. I appreciate council taking the time to get out here in the community. I think this was a great addition, and they did this a couple years ago, kind of got the ball rolling. I've been on a little bit of a listening tour myself. As of this week, in my campaign, I'm going to hit over 16,000 miles inside of Erie County since January, thousands of conversations. You know, I attended the last finance meeting, and there's a lot of things that I would say need to be very concerned, very concerned that much of what's being done or not done is typical Erie. We have our moonshot moment, like all of you know. I'm not here to lecture. It's more or less to bring a message for those that couldn't attend, for the hundreds of messages that I have in my inbox. Due to the last finance meeting, you know, there's different remarks that were made by certain people on council that I think were very upsetting to many people, and that's much of the reason why I think much has been written into some of the funding for the inclusion and the equity, because we have different things. We have individuals that are still in power, that still wield this stick, that kind of, I would say, not kind of, absolutely lead us astray. So these individuals in our communities, I've talked to a wide array of residents, different demographics, different genders, different income levels, and I hear the same concern. There's very few stakeholders that have a seat at Erie County's table when it comes to this ARP money. I look at, and my master's is in economic development, I think this is our moonshot moment, and I look at the framework of what is being done. I see ambiguous language. I see some things that are very vague, and we need to think these things through, the nuts and bolts. I understand there's a lot of planning that needs to be done, but for once, I see the city of Erie is leaps and bounds ahead of what Erie County is doing as far as inclusion, as far as having the conversations with residents, and truly engaging the stakeholders. Never again, in any of our lifetimes, or anyone in here's lifetimes, will our grandchildren even see this infusion of money. Because I'm out on the listening tour, and I talk to residents, and I hear them say things like, you know, "What are we going to do with this money?", or maybe they don't understand it. And to me, to equate it to them, as I kind of use the analogy of two individuals, maybe two siblings, that got an inheritance, a massive inheritance. One invests in themselves, obtains an education, you know, starts a business, and becomes successful, and it multiplies, they become fruitful. And in turn, you have the other one, who inherently builds their house upon the sand, goes and buys the newest Camaro, goes to Mexico, gets drunk, crashes the Camaro, you know, squanders the rest of the money, and six months later, they're worse off than what they were. The point being is, is we have this moonshot moment, and I'm here to just convey to council that you ultimately hold this responsibility. It's not the county executive, sure that she can implement proposals, but it's ultimately council that controls this purse strings. It is up to you, and I know the residents across Erie County, from the city of Erie, all the way out to Platteo, Mill Village, Corey, and so forth and so on, many of them are concerned that this is going to be the same old, the status quo, the business as usual, and they're not going to be included in any of these conversations. So that is the main purpose for me coming here tonight. I've heard this time and time and time again, and I hope that we take the time, we make the effort, and we plan this moonshot moment. We make sure this money is impactful, not for just an election cycle, or for a single generation, but for generations. We have the opportunity to really turn the tides here, and I look forward to working with every single one of you in the future to get this done, and that's all I have to say. I appreciate your time and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. We don't have any other members of the public who had signed up, but if there are others that wish to be heard, please come up to the mic, and you will receive three minutes. So are there any other members of the public that wish to be heard?
I too will probably skip the microphone, if that's okay. My name's John Whaley, I live in the city of Erie. I would like to say thanks for these meetings, too. This takes a lot of time and energy and effort, and it's great, and I wish there were three times the amount of people here. There's no reason why people can't go to meetings, so thank you for doing that. On the American Rescue Plan money, I've become educated, and it's not COVID money, it doesn't have to be spent on COVID-related things, which I really thought it did for a long time. So, we do have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and it looks like the county executive and maybe county councils reached out to county departments, county agencies, county authorities, and asked for feedback, and I saw an 88-page document. There was no executive summary, some of the pages were crooked, there was no collated table of numbers, that's all I've seen, and maybe there is something else. It's not on the county website, it was not in the agenda, it said it was attached, and we could find it, and it was not, so I had to get an email to you. Lot of stuff to wade through, so maybe you don't want the average person to wade through it and see what is going to be done with that money. So, shame on somebody. So, it seems rushed. County's getting 52, city's getting 73 million, Mill Creek's getting 6 million. Have we sat down with Mill Creek and said, "How are you going to spend your 6 million? Here's how we could leverage it, here's how we could do it together, here's what we see", et cetera? The city, and I hate to say, the city's doing a great job, but Kathy Rosdick, they had a planning meeting today, maybe you shouldn't have let her go to the city. They're coming up with ideas, framework, a lot of buzzwords. I did hear streetscaping, too much, but they're taking a slow road. They said, "We have half the money this year, half next year, and you have four years to spend it." We don't need to spend 26 million next week, or by the time council rolls again, so I would beg you to please look at how we're spending the money. I think economic development's the number-one priority. I saw a little bit about grants, a little bit about this. Erie County Redevelopment Authority wants a lot of money, but we're going to tread down the same path, it looks like, and Kathy Dahl-Kemper was on GEIDC when it went bankrupt. We want to buy the Green Shingle property, I guess, for $11 million, tear it down, remediate it, and build a building. I've lived all over this country. When people want to build something, when a company wants to move somewhere, they'll buy a whole block and tear it down. They don't need shovel-ready, level ground. I don't want us to be in that business. We wasted a lot of money, we gave away the Joyce-Sovacchio Park, or pennies on the dollar, wherever Gary is. We tried something, and it didn't work. Fairview Business Park, part of the bankruptcy sale, please stay out of that business. And lastly, Community College, now that we have it, I want it to be the best in the country.
Thank you, your three minutes has expired. Thank you for your comments.
Hello. Pick up the mayor. Charles Mark, I'm the local pastor, Community Baptist Church, and I wanted to frame my remarks.
And your municipality, sir.
Oh, I'm in Erie City.
Thank you.
I want to pick up where you left off, Erie County Community College. That is not a strange word to any of the folks here that have been working over 10 years to bring that college here. That college here now represents a new model of how Erie and Erie County will actually receive and distribute funds, whether they come from feds, through the states, through the counties, or however. But what I really do believe is that one of the reasons why all of the allocations that have come our way over the years have not really been effectively used to help bring up those who are on sinking sand is because we have not had the structure that is the kind that would be so inclusive, that it brings all of the entities together with a voice in order to create synergy and leveraging of social services and capital in a way that would improve not only Erie, but Erie County. So I am really, really excited about the possibility of us working toward a structure that would allow us to do things differently than in the past, because if we don't develop a new structure of governance that includes public and private, and the faith-based community, we will end up getting a lot of money, spending a lot of money, and at the end of the day, not have a whole lot left to show for it. So this is indeed a golden opportunity for us to really create a model of leadership and a model of governance from the grassroots up, from the top down, meeting in the middle. Many voices come together, many of whom come from the grassroots community, who are closest to the epidemic and pandemic of despair and hopelessness that exists in certain sectors of Erie. So I'm hoping that with this money comes new structure, new plans of collaboration, so that the past will not be repeated in the present, and the Erie County Community College, which is indeed a new model that hasn't been really developed in this neck of the woods in a long, long time, that kind of model of collaboration, and that involves economic development, educational development, faith-based inclusion, all those things can now take place with this opportunity that we have with new money. So, let's take advantage of this golden opportunity, and not just think of spending money here, there, and everywhere, but let's develop the structure that makes it effective, and when we look back and evaluate, it would be evidence-based that it is effective.
Thank you, your time has expired. Thank you. Are there any other citizens that wish to be heard?
Hi, my name's Gary Bukowski. I'm a representative, live in Mill Creek Township. I also work in Mill Creek Township at Sarah Reid Children's Center. And I just am here just to say a very few things, and that is, is that from history, I think this might be the first time a roadshow was outside, because I spent a little time in this August seat years ago. But one thing I wanted to mention is around ordinance number 65, and I know that's only half of the total dispersed under the 52, I would just ask that in your deliberations, that you consider, like you did in the CARES Act, the nonprofits of Erie County, because there's so many needs that, of course, have left a lot of them hurting from the pandemic, and I realize we want to move forward. I think all of us want to get away from the pandemic as much as we possibly can and move forward. But just in those deliberations, you know, please consider that, because I can tell you that from the support that we were able to apply for through the CARES Act, it made a difference in our organization. I want to thank all of you that were involved in that, on both sides of the fence, the legislative as well as the executive branch, because some people said, "Well, what would $80,000 make?" Well, I can tell you, we leveraged that money, and we started a $300,000 technological initiative, and I can tell you, as of today, we're at about 230,000. There's a lot of kids now that are learning, they're starting to actually start to code through robots. That is not something you would ever see at an organization like Sarah Reid Children's Center, because a lot of these kids, that's the furthest thing that they would ever be exposed to, and there's many other possibilities. So that's all I ask, is just to consider, you know, I certainly want to do more research on it, because I'm certainly not up to speed. I just know that Erie County, and that's the thing I had to remind a certain person years ago, was the mayor, named Tulio, is that Erie County includes all of these areas that is getting money, because Erie County's getting 52, Erie's getting 79, Mill Creek's getting 6.5, the boroughs are getting 12 million, yada, yada, yada. It's all Erie County. So, just with that, my thank you, and thank you for having the opportunity to say a few words, and thank you for the help through the CARES Act.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other citizens that wish to be heard?
Gary Horton, Erie municipality, and Mr. Chairman is my council rep. I didn't expect to say anything this evening, I only wanted to be here, but to have missed this beautiful venue, and to come away from it motivated to bring inner-city kids out here was worth the trip for me. I would also say that I disagree with the analogy that two previous speakers to me had about the city leading. In my opinion, the county is leading, and the county has led. The county has led on policies that impact poor people in the county more so than the city. Through your actions, through the thing that you are sworn to do, make policy, anti-racism policy, CBAs, Community College, summer jobs for youth, the city can't match that from a policy standpoint. I commend you. The city is not talking about the people most disproportionately impacted by COVID, black and brown, new Americans, poor whites, and the city's plan or approach, to me, is more status quo, same way they've always been. And then if you look at their impact on those same populations outside of COVID, we have nothing that the city can brag about. They haven't changed our lives. This is not about Kathy Dahl-Kemper. It is not. This is about county council doing the right thing at the right time. If not you, who? If not now, when? This is an opportunity to unify the poor people disproportionately impacted by COVID. I applaud you for your effort and your leadership in this county, and I hope you keep pushing it through. God bless you, we'll keep praying for you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other citizens that wish to be heard? I will, one more time, call Courtney Sable. Has Courtney arrived? Okay, are there any other citizens that wish to be heard? And finally, any other citizens that wish to be heard? Seeing none, we'll continue on with our meeting. I would entertain a motion for the minutes of our previous meeting from June 24.
I move that the minutes be accepted as before.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilman Horton, seconded by Councilwoman Rennie, Councilwoman Shouerman. Are there any comments or corrections? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll-call vote, please?
On the minutes, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastner?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schank?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Next are reports from county officials or their designees. Mr. Sparber, does the county executive or her designee have any reports this evening?
Not this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have a report from our Finance Chair, Finance Chairwoman Kim Clear. May we have your report, please?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, July 15, 2021, and we are submitting to the agenda old business items A through D, and new business items E through I, and K, L, and N. Thank you very much. That concludes my report. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you for your report. Next, we have a report from the Personnel Committee. Personnel Chairwoman Mary Rennie, could we please have your report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Personnel Committee also met on Thursday, July 15, and we are submitting to the agenda new business items A through D, J, M, and O, and that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your report. Next are reports from members of council. Councilman Brian Schank has a report tonight. Councilman Schank, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. My reports can be very simple and very brief. We just spent four hours on this. This is the actual paper I used during our meeting. You can see all the notes and question marks. There's a lot of questions that need to be answered in this before this thing really gets signed off on. And I got to tell you, the one thing I saw in here that made me very, very disappointed and upset, I didn't see one dime allocated for our veterans. Our country is coming out of a 20-year conflict. The needs of our veterans are just as important as everybody in this community, and even then some. There's several good projects in this town that have not even got a dime from, Project 22, you know, Veterans Miracle Network, the Homeless Veterans Center in the city of Erie. You know, not one dime is allocated from this administration to help our veterans. They are in need, too. We lose 22 veterans a day from suicide. They have to be taken care of. This group of veterans we have with us today, we're going to need help for the rest of their life, and their children are going to need help because of the impact of a 20-year conflict. And I got to tell you, going through this line by line, I find it a little insulting that the administration set down an employee vaccinee instead of $360,000 to entice county employees to get a vaccination. That's a personal choice, if you choose to go for it. I had mine as a first responder. So why do I need to bribe, pay for play, $300 per county employee? That $360,000 could feed an army, a squadron of veterans, and the homeless, and the people in the city, the people in northeast. The city of Erie always gets the spotlight for our wonderful food banks, who in my district, they're in the pandemic. Eckhart was nice enough to write some checks and got them through the COVID lockdown. So when I see this type of money just flipped off like it's no big deal, I find it insulting, and that's all I have to say. I yield back, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Schank. Are there any other members of council that have reports this evening? None have indicated. Seeing none, I'm going to make a report, make some brief comments. First, I would like to once again recognize Gary Bukowski for his service to our community, but most importantly, as a former District Four County Council Representative, and the founding representative of District Four. It's nice to see you continue to be active in the community, and always good to see you. Tonight, we've asked, we're going to ask our clerk to read through the entire line by line of the American Rescue Plan as it's been proposed. For those who didn't have the opportunity to be there on Thursday at the five-and-a-half-hour meeting, each item was extensively gone through. I can tell you from personal experience that there's been thousands of hours put into the work and the research on doing what we think is a fair and equitable way to spend this money in a very proactive and forward-thinking manner. When I was elected by my colleagues as chairman of council, I immediately sat a COVID impact and recovery committee. That committee met formally every Wednesday from January until June, and informally, there were meetings and committee meetings several days a week. Four members of council have served on that committee. I was honored to co-chair it, and will continue to co-chair it with Vice Chair Clear and my council colleagues, Brian Schank and Mary Rennie. All of our council colleagues had an opportunity to understand what was being discussed in those meetings, and we did have a variety of people from throughout our community in every level of service, industry, nonprofit, for-profit, people of education, people of color, people in despair, people who contribute to this community from the philanthropic side, and we have extensively gone through the needs of this community. For those of you, so you're aware, there's a portion of these funds that are set aside in what's called transformational grants. We are honored to have the Erie County Gaming Revenue Authority, who has the expertise in all of Erie County to administer these grants, and that is where there's grants set aside for transformative ideas from businesses, from nonprofits, money for veterans as we come out of the pandemic. So, once we go through, and I don't want to make all our comments tonight, because as a first reading, we tend to just allow the reading to happen, and we really reserve our comments for the night of the vote, so I will reserve many future comments until that time. But I would say to everybody- But I, I would say to everybody, I think you should look through this, understand it, understand the categories, the out-of-the-box transformative ideas that are coming out of this from the creation of a diversity commission to a fire authority, helping our volunteer fire companies and EMS who are in a critical position to get volunteers and retain them, to have training. Their existence in and of itself is, is at risk. And we recognize those things. But first and foremost, there are many items that county government has a responsibility towards first. And those are items that the taxpayer, all of us here in Erie County, will pay for one way or the other. And so we can mitigate the impact of COVID on our community. We have decided that we will tackle those items first. And those items are spelled out in the plan that we have put forward. So we have worked with the administration. The administration has done their own research, had their own meetings with their department heads, with members of the community. As I mentioned, we have done the same. We have met together. We have met in a variety of venues with multiple layers of people involved to bring this plan forward. So I submit that what we're bringing forward is transformative. It is fiscally responsible, most importantly, to the taxpayers of this community, dealing with our responsibilities in county government first. And it will make a change and an impact to our community. The county, with all of the work that we've done to this point, is ready to move forward and will continue to move forward on these items tonight. We will keep them at a first reading. We appreciate the input of citizens like yourself and others. And that's why we're leaving this as a first reading. And so we appreciate any additional input that you have as we continue to move this legislation forward. With that being said, we'll move on to the business of tonight. And first, we have old business. We have item number A under old business. And I would ask, council has resolved these issues and has decided that we are ready to move them off the table. So, Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, I move to, I would like to move item A off of the table.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion to move item A off of the table from Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote to remove this item from the table?
Removing ordinance 26 from the table, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, now that we have this removed from the table, may we have a second reading of the Library Fund Supplemental Budget appropriation of $105,000 for the Historic Libraries Project?
Second reading of ordinance number 26, 2021, fifth 2021 Library Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation to $105,500 and News Bank purchase agreement for Historic Newspaper Digitization Project.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Madam Vice Chair?
I would like to make a motion to amend the face sheet and the exhibit to reflect $102,217 and to include exhibits A, B, and C. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And the exhibits would be included on the face? As well, on the face sheet?
And the exhibits will be on the face sheet. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. We, we have a motion to amend this item by Vice Chair Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton. Are there any comments or questions from members of council?
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Madam Vice Chair?
I would just like to take a moment to, first of all, I think I want to tell the group how much time we have spent looking into the digitalization project with the library. And we would not be at this point if it were not for Attorney Tellerico, who has spent, I don't know how many hours with, working with the company, News Bank, and going through the agreement. He also was able to get the price down on this. But this is newspaper, historic newspaper information regarding Erie County that we will now have. And I want to thank him for looking into this and all of the work that you have done, Attorney Tellerico, to make this happen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council on the, this is for the amendment? Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote on the amendment?
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
May we now have a motion as amended?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Horton, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear. Any questions or comments? I'd like to make a couple of comments before we take this vote, similar to that of Vice Chairwoman Clear. I too want to thank Attorney Tellerico for the work that he's done. But I would also like to include Councilwoman Rennie and her diligence on this particular item, who, as she was a manager and an expert in, in library services, understood that we could do better on this particular item if we took more time to do so. And, and we did so. And we have come out with a much, much better project. I also want to thank the former director of the library, Blaine Desi, for the work that he had done. We had looked at doing this particular digitization project two and a half years ago, and the price tag was upwards of $850,000. So even before we got the additional decrease of $20,000, this project has come down by more than $200,000 in just a couple of years. And that's due to the diligence of both people working in the administration and the watchful eye of council. So I am honored to be supporting this item. There's no question that I wouldn't since I spend a lot of time in the heritage room at the library, and I know how valuable of an item this is for researchers, both coming into our community and people who already live here. So with that being said, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote?
An ordinance number 26 as amended, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Next, we have a companion item for possible action to remove from the table, ordinance number 27.
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chairwoman Clear?
I would like to make a motion to move item B off the table.
Thank you. We have a motion?
So moved.
And a second. Our motion is made by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Rastetter. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call to take this item off the table?
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may we now have a second reading of ordinance 27 that it's off the table?
A second reading of ordinance number 27, 2021, ninth 2021 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $105,500 for Library Historic Newspaper Digitization Project.
Mr. Chairman?
Madam Vice Chair, Claire?
I would like to make a motion to amend the face sheet and the exhibit to reflect $102,217. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have a motion?
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Shouerman. Are there any questions or comments from members of council? Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote on the amendment?
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
I just want to make the, the public aware tonight that what we're doing in these two items is, as Vice Chairwoman Clear had mentioned, the cost to do this particular project had decreased. And so when the original ordinance came down, it had a different item as what the cost would be per year. And so we had to amend to reflect the, the new amount that will be charged in the contract. And so that's where we're making these technical changes to these particular ordinances, which are companion ordinances as we're moving them through. So I just wanted to make you, everyone aware of that. And I would look for a motion as amended on this particular item.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton. Any questions or comments from members of council? Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
An ordinance 27 as amended, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Are there any members of council that would like to make a motion to take any other items off the table this evening? Seeing none, we'll continue forward with our meeting to new business?
Mr. Smith, ah, Mr. Smith, sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Madam Vice Chairwoman Clear?
I would like to make a motion to move items E and J to a second reading. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
And I would also like to, at this time, amend the face sheet of letter, I'm sorry, of ordinance number 65, which is letter H, to state... Here it is. 2021 American Rescue Plan Act Fund Budget, Fund, sorry, supplemental appropriation of $26,215,751,000 for establishment of ARPA fund to administer and disperse ARPA grant funding. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So it's gotta be like one motion, both?
Yeah, yeah.
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton. Are there any comments or questions of members of council to the amendment to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, may I just note that, just so that the public is aware, we usually keep things at a first reading so that the public has time to be aware of what money we are spending or what money is going out or coming in. The reason that we are moving items E and J to a second is because it's more of a pass-through and/or there are time constraints on the actual money and when it needs to be allotted. These are not coming out of our general fund balance, just so that you are aware. But that is why we, we choose to move things to a second at times. So, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for those comments. We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton. Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
And now that we've amended the agenda for tonight's meeting, I'm gonna ask that we go back to old business. And, Mr. Smith, may we have a second reading of ordinance number 55 in title only, please?
A second reading of ordinance number 55, 2021, 21st 2021 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $300,000 and new line item for additional election costs.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mary Rennie, seconded by Councilwoman Ellen Shouerman. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Next, may we have a second reading of ordinance number 56 in title only, please, Mr. Smith?
A second reading of ordinance number 56, 2021, 2021 General Fund Budget, revised expenditures of $1,000 and creation of temporary staff line.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Shouerman, seconded by Councilwoman Rennie. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
An ordinance 56, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may we now have a first reading of ordinance number 58 in title only?
A first reading of ordinance number 58, 2021, 24th 2021 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $19,658 for creation of diversity, equity, and inclusion officer position in the Human Resources Department. So moved.
Thank you. Oh, that's a first. Yeah, thank you. And, Mr. Smith, may we now have a first reading of ordinance number 59 in title only?
A first reading of ordinance number 59, 2021, amending ordinance 122 of 2020 to change the position grade and salary of the county clerk position.
So moved?
No.
Oh, sorry.
We're so anxious to make sure all of our business is taken care of that we're ready to move forward.
Just got done saying, we need to give it time.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, may we have a first reading of ordinance number 60 in title only, please?
A first reading of ordinance number 60, 2021, 25th 2021 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $24,573 for creation of deputy county clerk position in the Office of County Council.
Thank you. May we now have a first reading of ordinance number 61 in title only, please?
A first reading of ordinance number 61, 2021, first 2021 Planning Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $33,716 for GIS physician reclassification.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And may we now have a second reading of ordinance number 62 in title only, please?
A second reading of ordinance number 62, 2021, eighth 2021 Public Health Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $17,639 and additional funds from the Safe and Healthy Communities Grant.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Shouerman, seconded by Councilman Schenk. Are there any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On ordinance number 62, Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
I just wanted to mention to the members of public who are here, and many of you know this already, but when we come to the meeting, council members have deliberated these items not only over several weeks as they've come down to us, but also as the finance and personnel meeting and then at our caucus meeting. So council members always have an opportunity to, to speak or make comments about these issues. But most of the time, we are already prepared to take our vote. And so that's why we continue to move forward with these items in the fashion that we are. that we are. So with that said, Mr. Smith, may we have a first reading of ordinance number 63, in title only?
A first reading of ordinance number 63, 2021, 26th, 2021 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $93,314 for EMTA local match shortfall in 2021 and 2022.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Horton.
Yeah, I know this is... The first reading, but I think that some like it would not, I think it would be appropriate if we put that total sum that they're requesting from us in there, not just leave it at the verbiage to make up the difference. I think we should put that figure in there.
Rather than just having it in the explanation, you'd like to move that to the, amend that to be included in the ordinance itself?
Correct.
Okay, would, how about if we say the required amount, local matching fund for the fiscal year, give the amount, the amount they've collected, and then the amount that we, so the language that's in here added to the ordinance?
I mean, it just, whichever's cleaner, I just, I mean, most people can do the math themselves, but just for clarity's sake.
Shall we take, can we take a vote to amend that ordinance tonight and have that prepared for the second reading?
Sure.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend ordinance number 63 to include the numbers essentially at the bottom. The local match request, which is $1,153,888, the amount of money that EMTA has collected towards that local match, which is $946,520, leaving the amount that we're funding, the $93,314. So we have that motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have the motion by Councilman Horton, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear. Are there any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a vote to amend this ordinance?
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yeah.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Horton, for catching that particular item. And then that will be read and taken to a final vote at our next meeting. Okay? Mr. Smith, may we have a first reading of ordinance number 64, in title only?
A first reading of ordinance number 64, 2021, third 2021 Mental Health Intellectual Disabilities, MHEID Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $2,835,469, and creation of new line item for receipt of additional grant funds.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, may we have a first reading of ordinance number 65, in its entirety, including Exhibit A, with each line item and separating into fund bureaus, please? And just so the public knows, this is the $26 million for the creation of the American Rescue Plan Act Fund Budget that has been talked about. And as we said earlier, for transparency, and so the public can better understand what we're doing here, we're asking the clerk to read this particular item in its entirety. Mr. Smith, if you would go ahead and do that, please?
A first reading of ordinance number 65, 2021, 27th, 2021 American Rescue Plan Act Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $26,315,751, and the creation of the American Rescue Plan Act Fund Budget. Being enacted by the County Council of the County of Erie pursuant to Article 2, Section 3B1, in Article 8, Section 8 of the Erie County Home Rule Charter and certified by the County Executive, that the supplemental appropriation of $26,315,751 and new line items for the establishment of the 2021 Erie County American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Fund Budget for the administration and dispersment of ARPA grant funding are hereby approved as outlined on the attached Exhibit A. Being further enacted, that the final distribution of funds by Erie County must be approved by County Council, and that weekly reports on ARPA expenditures shall be provided to Council by the administration through December 31, 2021. This ordinance shall be effective immediately upon adoption. Now for the exhibit to the ordinance. It begins with the revenue portion, $26,315,751, with three lines within that bureau, American Rescue Plan Grant, checking interest, and a $100,000 grant. Under expenditures, would be ARPA administration, which includes professional fees of $35,000. And these next areas will be separate bureaus, as handled by the accounting department. So there are lines within each of the bureaus. These are accounting constructs, not physical or office constructs for the most part. Community Futures Center, created as contracted services, not county employees, and will only exist as the post-COVID fiscal recovery remains. There are lines for travel work required, $9,500, data processing, $2,000, telephone, $1,500, postage, $1,000, duplicating and printing, $1,000. Professional fees, $250,000, other office supplies, $5,000, computer supplies, $10,000, for a total of $280,000. The next is the Revenue Replacement Bureau. These funds will be transferred to the General Fund through the next ordinance once it's passed at the next meeting, or whenever that may be, $7,092,000. The next area is Total Revenue Replacement, no, I'm sorry, County Assess Needs, Maintenance and Repair, $60,000, professional fees, $10,000, computer supplies, $240,000, other office, $34,760, capital outlay, $42,000, total County Assess Needs, $386,760. Let me get some water.
Yeah, Mr. Smith, take your time, please.
Carl, you're working for God's death.
Next area. Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission Grant. The money for this grant will be placed in a restricted account until the commission is formed and a board is seated by County Council and the administration. The total for the Diversity Equity Inclusion Fund is $3.5 million. The next area is Municipal Assistance, administered by the Planning Department. Municipal Infrastructure, GAP Funding Grants, total $2.5 million. Public Safety Grants, total $1 million.
Mr. Smith, could you read the exclusions as well under the municipal infrastructure, please?
Under the $2.5 million infrastructure grants, eligible municipalities must apply for other possible available funding, and this excludes entitlement municipalities. Under Public Safety Grants, this excludes the City of Erie, cannot be used for debt service or new vehicles. Each entity must apply for other possible available funding. Total Municipal Assistance, $3.5 million. Next is Erie County Economic Development.
Mr. Smith, before you go on to that, there is one item that's missing here, and that is that under this Public Safety Grant, this is intended to have seat money for, when the enabling legislation is created from the state, for the creation of a fire authority in Erie County.
Noted, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Please continue.
The next area is County Economic Development, administered by the Redevelopment Authority. Urban Renewal and Community Development, $2,779,500. Entrepreneurship, $737,500. Includes E for All, Women and Minority Business, the Diversity Loan Program, Start Grant for the Arts. All entities must apply for any other possible matching or available grant funding. The next line is Workforce Development.
Mr. Smith, before you go on, could you just include that in the women, it should be women and minority business? Can you include in there that this is a grant that was received by the SBA, Small Business Administration, and Erie County's portion would be a matching grant to receive that grant? And that's a 700, we don't have to put this in, but it's a $750,000 grant that was received through the Enterprise Development Corporation?
So this $737,500 is matching to that original grant?
Yeah. Well, yeah. It's not the exact one. It's only $150,000 per year.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. I just mentioned that so people know that it's a five-year grant.
Workforce Development, $150,000. This will be a minority grant program through the Erie Chamber and Growth Partnership. The total for this particular area is $3,667,000. The next area is Public Health, $45,025 for overtime, $3,432 for FICA, $1,307 for workers' compensation, $5,236 for pension, $50,000 in pass-through, $10,000 for the Neighborhood Resource Center, $10,000 for the Police Athletic League, $745,000 for Blue Zones. There is a restriction on the Blue Zones that all seven partners must sign on to that particular program. There's currently an employee vaccine incentive line that totals $360,000. The total for Public Health, $1,230,000. The next area is Business Grants. Shuttered Venues Grants, total $1,474,991. This will be administered by the Redevelopment Authority and excludes lead assets. Businesses must have applied for other possible grant funding from other funding sources. There's a new small business grant line for $150,000. Also to be administered by the Redevelopment Authority, there are lead asset grants that total $1 million, administered by the Finance Department, must apply or have applied for federal shuttered facilities grant and/or PPP. The total for this business grant area, $2,624,991. The last area is called Transformative Grants, and that totals $4 million. Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further information for that area.
Yeah. Mr. Smith, can you just add in there that these funds will be administered by the Erie County Gaming Revenue Authority? Okay. And then, thank you, Mr. Smith, for reading through ordinance number 65. We will continue on with our agenda. The next item, which will also be a first reading, is a companion item to number 65. And the reason that we have these two companion items is because the revenue replacement category that Mr. Smith has already discussed, are funds that, this is a one, this year, and these funds are the only time we can do the revenue replacement at this particular level. And they have to be moved to the General Fund. And for the additional items that we're dealing with, we then have to create a new ordinance to take those funds out of the General Fund and appropriate them, which we will do in ordinance number 66. So for continued transparency, Mr. Smith, could you please, could you please do a first reading of ordinance number 66 in its entirety, please?
A first reading of ordinance number 66, 2021, 28th, 2021 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $7,092,000, and creation of new line items for transfer from American Rescue Plan Act Fund for revenue replacement. Being enacted by the County Council of the County of Erie pursuant to Article 2, Section 3B1, in Article 8, Section 8 of the Erie County Home Rule Charter and certified by the County Executive, that the General Fund Budget supplemental appropriation of $7,092,000, and creation of new line items for transfer from American Rescue Plan Act Fund for revenue replacement are hereby approved as outlined on the attached Exhibit A. This ordinance shall be effective immediately upon adoption.
Mr. Smith, could you read the Exhibit A then, please?
Exhibit A for the supplemental appropriation of $7,092,000. Under revenue, it lists, of course, that figure. Then, under expenditures, maintenance and repair, $142,000, capital outlay, $150,000, firefighters' grant for 501 C4s, $300,000, Erie County Convention Center, $2 million, Erie Council of Governments, $50,000, EC3 Empowerment Grant, $1.5 million, EC3 Barrier Reduction Grant, $250,000, and a transfer to Pleasant Ridge Manor, $2.7 million, total $7,092,000.
Mr. Smith, thank you for going through those items and reading through them. As we continue through on our agenda, could we have a first reading of ordinance number 67, in title only, please? Is that the one we moved to a second? I'm sorry, we moved that to a second. That was our second that we moved to a second. So could we have a second reading, in title only, of ordinance number 67, please?
A second reading of ordinance number 67, 2021, amending ordinance 50, 2021, to correct a new position number in the District Attorney Office.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Showerman, seconded by Councilman Horton. Are there any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, could we have a roll call vote, please?
On ordinance 67, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
May we have a first reading of ordinance number 68, in title only, please?
A first reading of ordinance number 68, 2021, 29th, 2021 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $33,716 for planning GIS... appropriation of $33,716 for planning GIS physician reclassification.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Our next item is resolution number 28, and Mr., Vice Chairwoman Clear?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to make a motion to move to table resolution number 28. This is per the county executive and the administration.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion to table from Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Shouerman. Are there any questions or comments from members of council? Just so the public knows, this is an item, and we've mentioned this in caucus, that we are not ready to continue to move forward from. There is still some outstanding language and documents that are missing, and the council and the county executive want to make sure that we have all of the documents before we present it to council for any type of a vote. So with that said, Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote on tabling this item?
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Mr. Smith, may we have a reading in title only of resolution number 29, please?
Resolution number 29, 2021, authorizing Thomas S. Talarico Esquire as designated appointee of Erie County Council in pursuit of litigation related to the heart and lung appeals in 2021.
No move.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton. Any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On resolution 29, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Mr. Smith, we have a possible sale of the parcel. Could you read the index number and the parcel address for us, please?
Parcel number 39-006-007.2-007.54, 2947, Happy Valley Road, Lot 29. This is a trailer lot.
No move.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Shouerman. Any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On the sale of parcel, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Mr. Smith, before we get to our next item, I would ask to make a motion or to have a motion from council to go into executive session.
Some move.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to adjourn into executive session by Councilman Horton, seconded by Councilwoman Shouerman. Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Shouerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Council will now go into executive session. Before we adjourn, we do have to come back to the public meeting, so we will be around. We understand if you're not here, we won't be offended in any way, but if you are here, we will, this is a requirement in a public meeting for us to come back to public session before we actually then adjourn. So council, if we can move to inside to the executive session. We are now ready to continue the business at our regular meeting of July 20. Are there any other comments or questions to come before council? Before we adjourn, our next regular finance and personnel meeting will be held on August 12 at the Erie County Courthouse at 4:00 p.m., and we do have a tentative special meeting set up for Thursday, August 5 at the courthouse for a second reading of ordinance number 65 and 66. That date could possibly change. First of all, we have to secure the time on that particular day, so is there a time of day that works better for council members? It's 4:00 or 5:00 p.m. on August 5.
Wait, wait, wait. I've got 80 things that night.
Eighty? We're gonna vote on that?
Yeah, there will be a second reading.
Oh, no, I have something. I already have it in my calendar. Forget it, I'm good.
Okay. Okay, so tentatively, we have it set for the 5th, would be at 4:00, 4:00 or 5:00 p.m. at the courthouse. There may be a possibility of having that special meeting next week, and if we did so then, it would be Monday, noon there, and Wednesday. Are there any days that would work for council members to do the special meeting next week? Ellen, how about, are you up on Tuesday?
Tuesday, Monday.
How about Monday? Possibly Monday, that may be, so we'll see, we'll determine that by tomorrow or Thursday. All right, so either next Monday or remaining on the 5, okay? Any final business to come before council that I ask for a motion to adjourn?
Some move.